For August 20, 2024, we will jump right into the agenda that was printed for everyone. There's a copy outside if you don't have one. We will begin tonight with our roll call. So, Mr. Evans, when you're ready, could you please call the roll?
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Kenkri.
Here.
Mr. Bostonbrook.
Here.
Mr. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Green. Very good. Let's move on to our second item, which is the reading of our statement of procedure, which is how we conduct our hearings and handle our business tonight. Look to my immediate right, Vice Chair, Mr. Desmond, if you could read for us the statement of procedure.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by the Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Applicants must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the approved agenda. When an item is called, the chairperson will verify that the applicant is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. If there is less than a full board of seven members present at a meeting, an applicant may request a postponement, so his or her request can be heard by a full board. If there is no request for a postponement, the applicant will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the applicant makes their presentation and hears any questions that the board may have, the chairperson will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairperson, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, i.e. next-door neighbor, live behind property, et cetera, and state whether they are for, in favor of, or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairperson. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairperson to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairperson will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Let's move on to item three, which is approving last month's meeting minutes. Unless there's any discussion for the meetings, the minutes as printed, could I get a motion to approve? All right, motion from Mr. Fox, seconded by Mr. Green. No further discussion. I think we're ready to vote on the minutes. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
All right. Minute meetings are approved from July. Now we'll move on to approving tonight's agenda as printed. Unless there's any discussion on the agenda as printed, we'll go ahead and consider that final. All right. Now we move on to item five, which is the hearing that we have tonight. We have one case before us at 55 Florence. So, Mr. Evans, whenever you're ready, if you could begin by giving us an overview of this variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is for 55 Florence. This is a variance request to allow a new home to be set back 38 feet from the front property line, where the zoning ordinance requires a setback of 40 feet. Now, the subject home is under construction. If I could just reference the overhead here, the screen, rather. Now, this is a, the property of 55 Florence is outlined in red, and this is Square Lake Road at the top. We have Liverntoy to the right. And I'm going to continue to zoom in to give everybody an idea of the property configuration in the neighborhood. Now, just about everything you see here is single-family residential, with the exception of this non-single-family residential. There's the zoning map, where everything in yellow is identi, just about everything in yellow is identical zoning. There's a further close-up of the subject property that was taken, whenever these areas were taken, sometime in the last year. So, this is the ASBIL survey that was performed by the applicant surveyor after substantial construction had occurred. And what the surveyor identified is that the actual setback of the house as it's constructed right now is only 38 feet from the front property line, which is up here at the top, and they need 40 feet. The applicant will inform the board of the circumstances that led to this, but in order to proceed with what he's got there now, they're requesting relief from the board for that setback requirement. I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions from board members? All right, seen none. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Let's move on to invite the applicant who wishes to come forward or representative. Feel free to come to the podium, and if you could state your name, sir, and we have the application you filed, but if you want to add anything else for us to consider, the floor is yours.
Well, I'll try to keep it short. My name's Kevin Hamilton. I live actually at 47 Florence, which is to the east of that house. My partner lives to the west. Older subdivisions, all those homes are lower than the road. So, when I increase this, first of all, I made a mistake. I'm not going to deny that. I already know that the house is too close now, and I'm trying to find a simple, easy, normal resolution for the homeowner, because I did sell the home. I didn't sell, what I did is I increased the garage by two feet in order to put a landing, because on the older homes, they're sitting lower than the road, and you bring these homes up, which creates a bunch more steps into the home. So, creating more steps, you put a landing, which is 32 or 36 inches wide, and I felt that the smaller 21-foot garage is too hard to maneuver around having a landing. So, I was under the impression the home was pushed back three to five feet off the setback. It clearly wasn't. It was right on the setback, because I increased the garage two feet to accommodate that landing so they could walk around the front of their car. By doing that, I got the call that I'm not conforming, and trying to figure out what I can do to not compromise the structural integrity of the home. I'm going to be tearing out the footings, cutting through the trusses, garage floor. The home's drywalled inside. I realize that it's not anybody's fault but myself, but just trying to keep the home structurally tacked and maneuverable for the homeowners. I didn't charge them for it, so it's not really a contract issue. It's just, it's feasible. I produced some image of, I don't know if it's on here, of the street that shows kind of how other structures on the, on the street are very, very close. I think I go from 11-foot, the one that's closest at 11-foot of the right-of-way, side of the 40. That's really not my point, is that other people have issues. It's just that it's fitting in the subdivision. It doesn't look, it's an older sub. There's colonials, there's ranches, some of them are 15 feet back, some of them are 80 feet back. It's just, it's all scattered. It doesn't look abnormal. And my intent was not to violate the setback. It was just flat-out a mistake. I had the room to set the house back. I just didn't know that. It wasn't, it wasn't like there was no space. There was space. It was just a mistake made. So now, at this point, I'm just trying not to compromise the whole. I don't really have much to say about that, besides that I'm just hoping that we can get this variance, so I don't have to cut into their footings and risk any issues further for them. And I appreciate all your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything about how this happened, because it was surprising to myself. I've been doing this for over 20 years. I've worked and lived in Troy and never had this happen. So.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I do. At what stage of construction is the house currently at?
So, I was allowed to continue the interior, but when I found out, it was framed, insulated, and I continued the interior of the home, because, not the garage, because at that point, I didn't know what was going to be the future. I didn't know if I was going to be cutting off, tearing everything out, and redoing the front of the garage. But currently, it is painting, but not the garage. The garage is just insulated.
Okay. And as far as the overall building envelope for the property, are you maxed out all the way behind it, or just to the front?
Just to the front. I have room. That's what I'm saying. If I, I was under the impression, like I spoke to my surveyor, I told him push the house back three to five feet, knowing that I likely would have a landing in the garage. It didn't get pushed back. So, it's on me. I missed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Green?
It's, it's on the diagram, provided the ASBIL, but what is the depth of the interior of the garage today?
Currently?
Yeah.
23 feet.
Thank you.
Yeah. Instead of 21, because like I said, like I said, the landing.
Right.
Yeah. I just, the garages nowadays on the new blueprints are very small. Even a two-car garage, you can't get out of your car. It's, it's just what it is. But depth-wise, they're very tight as well, and I just thought that I was making it more usable.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming forward. We've heard from the applicant. At this point, we will open up the public hearing. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak for or against the variance, you're welcome to step forward to the podium. And if you could just identify yourself and your relationship to the property, we'd be happy to hear from you.
I'm Don Bartlett. I live at 150 Florence, so it's across the street from the property. There he is. You can see it right there, 150. And my house was built in 1919, so it's 105 years old. It's the oldest house on the street, and it predates Troy. And my house is set back 36 feet. And all the older houses in the neighborhood, as Kevin mentioned, are closer than the variance. And so, I think that the, having this house grant the variance wouldn't detract from the character of the neighborhood, because it's already a diverse collection of different styles of homes and different types of homes. In fact, I would say that replacing a shabby house with a beautiful, modern house has been a real asset to the neighborhood, you know? So, the work that Kevin has done to improve that property next to, next to him is really a step in the right direction. I've been a sidewalk superintendent as I drive by every day, looking at construction, and I did work construction for summers during my high school and college career, so I'm pretty familiar with the process. And I have to say that Kevin has top-notch crews doing high-quality jobs, and there's no way he would knowingly cheat on, on setback. At this point, there's two choices. Cut off two feet from the front of the garage, and Kevin's willing to do it. In fact, he never put the bricks on the sides of the garage, as well as the front, so that it'll make it easier for him to cut two feet off the front, yes, too. Tim, the owner, who lives on the other side of him at 99 Florence, he said he's willing to cut two feet off, you know? If that's what it takes, that's what it takes. But I'd like to point out that, at this point, we can't move the house back, and we have two choices: cut two feet off or accept the variance. And I believe that for the character of the neighborhood, accepting the variance is the better solution. Why? Because if you have a short garage, you're much more likely to park your car in the, in the driveway of the street. Neither one is, is desirable. There's kids that play in the street. Having to maneuver around a car in the street is a detriment, in my opinion. And I think that I would recommend approving this variance as the best solution to a bad situation at this point. Oh, it's also harder to get big trucks or emergency vehicles, pass cars parked in the street. And I think, in summary, replacing a shabby house with a beautiful, modern house, even if it only has a 38-foot setback, is a real asset to the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Appreciate it. Any questions for the, all right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And any further comment from members of the public? Not seeing anyone in person. Sir, feel free to come forward.
My name is Yagnesh Rambat. I live in 42 Florence Drive, right across the property line. I'm just a new resident in Troy. I used to live in up north, and this is the first time ever in my life that I'm coming in a public meeting and everything. So, and still, I have a small kids and everything, growing up and everything, family. I don't see anything much difference in having the two-feet difference, like as visually from across the home, you know? It looks like, okay, fine. Right now, the home is just built with the bricks. Two feet is still, not have bricks yet, you know, for the garage section. To me personally, I don't feel that there is any kind of a problem, looking aesthetically, but I'm not sure how does it make much difference with the zoning in the city, you know, with two feet. So, to me, I think I should approve that, you know, having two-foot extension on anything. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I don't see anyone else stepping forward. I know, Mr. Desmond, I think we had one written comment?
We do, from 108 Florence, the Colliers, and they support the approval of the variance. It's a pretty concise letter. That's what it says.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Evans? Is that it for, okay. All right. I think we've exhausted the public hearing, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point, we will take it back to the members of the board for discussion. I see Mr. Green raising his hand.
I think.
I'm sorry. Is there a tiebreaker here?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'm not happy to be starting with this, but unfortunately, I think it's a fairly clear thing. I'm going to read a portion of the statement of practical difficulty that we presented with. It says, "In order for a variance to be granted, a practical difficulty as determined by the board must be present." Skipping slightly ahead, "Dimensional or other non-use variances shall not be granted by the zoning and board of appeals unless it can be determined that all of the following facts and conditions exist." And those are exceptional characteristics of the property make compliance difficult. The characteristics must be related to the premises, not the others. So, your, your picture is illustrative, but unfortunately, we can't apply it. "The characteristics which make compliance with the dimensional requirements shall not be of a personal nature." I think that's fair. "The characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or a previous owner." And the proposed variance will not be harmful. I think we can agree, to the character of the neighborhood or safety, and I think we can agree, based on the comments and the neighbors, that that, that is so. Unfortunately, with what I'm, with what I'm presented, I did a quick look, just, just for something to work with. The Chevy Suburban, which is the largest today still, the longest SUV from GM, is 225.7 inches, which is about 20 feet. It's not, not even, which means the back of the garage becomes pretty useless at that, at a shorter truncated length. But even pulling that monster into the garage would theoretically be possible to shut the door. As such, at least I personally, I, I'm willing to hear from my colleagues, but I, I wouldn't be able to support something at this time. I'm sorry.
Was it Mr. McCauley? Did you have?
I just have a comment. One, I mean, the fact that this house is not fully occupying the envelope, it's clear this is not a builder who is just trying to maximize the footprint of the house, which we see pretty often. I would actually invite Kevin, Mr. Hamilton, to come back to the mic, and if he has any site issues relative to the property that came up, that he would like to relay, that would give us something more to go on with regard to the property itself.
I, that's the problem, is I don't have a site issue. It, the issue for me in kind of answering what you're saying is structural integrity of the home. I don't want to compromise that. Yes, I can cut the front of the garage off. That is feasible to make it even smaller, which definitely wouldn't fit a Suburban, but I, that's what I'm trying not to do, because I don't want to cut into a footing. I don't want to tear out a floor that could risk any future issues for the home. Like, when we build homes, we try to give them a solid product, big bones, strong bones that last forever. I may not dress up a home very fancy, but basement walls, foundations, like that's something we just don't mess with. And yeah, if there was a wetland or a flood plain or something, and I was trying to move it forward, that would be my pitch to you. But I'm not even going to try to sway you to believe that. There was nothing. It was a flat-out mistake, and I guess I shouldn't have increased the garage. I was just trying to make it more usable. Like, to me, I have a, I have a garage. I live in a ranch right next door. I take my wife's SUV. It's an Expedition. I pull it in. I back out, and I watch the camera until I see the paint line on my floor, so I know that I'm right in front of the garage door. That way, I can walk around in front of it. When I was doing this, I, that was my thought, is that my garage's too small, and I don't want somebody to have to pull their bumper up to this landing and have to walk outside to go back into their house in the rain. It was just my thought. Thought I had the space to do it, and I mean, I'm sorry, I did have the space to do it. I thought that the home was pushed back from relaying the messages to the surveyor. I didn't catch that he never moved it back. So, my biggest thing is just I don't want to tear up the foundation for the home.
Is that garage on a slab?
Yes, footing is a slab. Yeah.
I know your pain. I also have an Expedition, and I've abandoned the garage entirely. That's just where we keep tools now.
Mine is, mine's quite tight. But yeah, it's footings and slab. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Not a question for you, but.
Oh.
Comment for the board, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Okay. I know this is splitting hairs, but if the builder asks the, the designer to move a building back, and it doesn't happen, is the builder, I mean, obviously, he's taking responsibility, but he's not necessarily at fault for the details of our, of our criteria in front of us. It was the outside contractor that didn't follow his instructions that was at fault, in my opinion. And it, I believe it's a big factor, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and the fact that this neighborhood is substantially older than the city of Troy. We've used that several times in the past as a criteria for a hardship. The application of this would be a bit different than past discussions of the fact that neighborhoods were built well before the zoning was put in place. I don't, in the spirit of what's written, I don't see a problem. It's just making sure we craft the resolution properly.
Yeah, Mr. McCauley?
I'm going to agree with Mr. Eisenbacher. Having grown up in that area, I, the eclectic houses individually built, and the setbacks and everything else, we have a builder that's willing to take responsibility for an error, not caused by him, but by his contractor, in a sense, his surveyor. Get money back. So, from my standpoint, I look at it and say, he's adding to the neighborhood. It's not compromising the integrity of the neighborhood, sightlines, or anything like that. That was my first concern. The fact that he lives next door, and his partner who owns the property lives on the other side of it, he's not going to want to compromise a house. And I, and I hate to have a new-built house compromised to start with, because I think it just goes downhill from there. Just one thing leads to another. It's just a domino effect. Admitting the mistake is huge in my mind, and I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher. I think this is something that we can help him with, in a sense, as a good neighbor, and still meet our criteria.
Mr. Green?
To that point, I have not yet heard enough to compel me personally. But to that point, our fifth note is that the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets. public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city, which would include future residents. So, I would say that is arguably within the bounds, not wanting to compromise the foundation. So, as a point, I can accept that. But I'm just adding that note.
Is that a motion?
So, hold on, I want to, just want to, obviously, this is a regrettable situation, and commend the applicant for, you know, his honesty and transparency in coming tonight. It's a difficult, difficult case, obviously, for us to have to make a decision on, but, you know, we've had training on this, we've been over and over and over the five characteristics that by the zoning laws, we have to satisfy each and every one of them in order to grant a variance. Not four out of five, not one out of five, but all five have to be met. And so far, we have, I guess, admissions from the applicant that he doesn't meet A or D. He said there's no exceptional characteristics of the property, and he's acknowledged that he, again, not intentionally, and there's no, there's no knowledge or intent built into the standards. It's not like you intend to or don't intend to, it's just you created the condition. And so, I have a difficult time if anyone were to, I know there's thousands of people watching this right now on YouTube, but, you know, those who would watch this hearing and consider this, for us to grant a variance, when we have an acknowledgement that two out of the five are not met, I think we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. And I fully acknowledge the difficult situation the applicant is, the thing, the good things we want to do, you know, to preserve the structural integrity of the house, you know, we're not allowed to take into consideration the financial implications that the applicant brings to us, whether it would cost money, you know, to fix an issue or address something. That's not something that we're permitted to take into consideration. So, this is a difficult case, but I think, given the circumstances, it's not a variance that I can support. Mr. McCully?
See, I would argue for A, that the topography of the property is why he made that change and was expecting a surveyor to take care of that. So, from my standpoint, it's not something he intentionally did or he did, it was a subcontractor, and it was done solely to adjust to the topography of the property. So, in my mind, that would fit A. As far as D, I know what you're saying, so I don't, I'm still wavering on that one.
Yeah, Mr. Kenkri.
A couple of things. One is that it is a older neighborhood, and as has been pointed out, there are several homes that are worst offenders of the setback to start out with. And I think, in which case, it just kind of looks like we are holding this particular applicant to a higher standard than other homes that are already there, and there's nothing that we can do about it, and it just kind of feels a little bit unfair to hold somebody to a standard so high, that just for two feet, we have to ask them to go and redo a whole bunch of work, when there are already so many homes near at the same property that are worst offenders. And my other comment is that, as our opening statement says, that the zoning Board of Appeals is a group of seven neighbors, and I think we look at it as a neighbor-to-neighbor, and I have myself observed that not every neighbor who comes before us has the proper, let's say, the proper training or everything in terms of how to make a case. And so, I think, as neighbors, we can help the applicant to make the right case, knowing what the issue in front of us is. So, I don't hold anything that the applicant has said against their case, but I think as a neighbor, I want to help them to kind of find the right solution.
I guess, just a couple of things. The applicant is a builder, so 20 years in building, so presumably, the applicant is perhaps more sophisticated than an applicant who isn't a builder and doesn't know the laws. I don't think it's really our role to help. I mean, we want to accommodate and understand and help people make the best arguments, but we're not here to help, per se. And I guess as far as the placement of the house, when we talk about an exceptional characteristic of the property, and we've been through this many, many times, you know, it's an odd-shaped parcel, a regular shape, there's something really unique. If I look at the map that Mr. Evans has up, the parcel looks, you know, roughly the same in dimension-wise as every other house on the street. And, and I guess as to the question of, there are obviously older homes in this, in this neighborhood. I think it's been acknowledged that most of those homes were built perhaps even before the city was a city. And, you know, those are considered against grandfathered in, and if they were to ever do a, you know, do a renovation, knock it down, build it, they would also be subject to the current zoning laws. With the idea that, you know, all homes are, at least in theory, supposed to be brought up to the zoning ordinance if, if they, you know, changed the home. So, again, I'm not the most popular person in the room at the moment, but I, and I'm struggling with this, but I just can't, given the direction we've been given by the zoning laws, and, you know, the reason why we're here is, is to make these, you know, these decisions, so, but I appreciate the discussion. Is there anyone else that would like to, or make a motion? I may be outnumbered, I don't know. Oh. Mr. Eisenbacher?
I will make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance for two feet for the as-built garage for the following five reasons. Exceptional characteristic for the property is the topography and the age of the neighborhood compared to the rest of the city. The characteristic which makes compliance is related to this premises. C, it's not of a personal nature. D, characteristic which makes compliance with the dimensional requirement difficult, it's created by surveyor and designer, not the current owner. And E, the proposed variance, as was previously mentioned by Mr. Green, E, all the criteria meet.
Second?
All right. We have a motion to grant, or by Mr. Eisenbacher, second by Mr. Desmond. Any further discussion, Mr. Green?
Under point A, I would only ask, or argue at least, that the consideration of the age of the surrounding neighborhood cannot be taken into account for point A. The topography, that's an argument. I don't see how the surrounding neighborhood fits within that property's characteristics.
The first sentence, or the first part of the sentence, the exceptional characteristics of the property for which the variance is sought, that makes compliance with dimensional requirements substantially more difficult, then it has a list of different items that are more site and land-related, but the site and the land is influenced by when it was zoned and when the houses were built. Like, one of these items is vegetation. Had there been an old tree in the front yard, that has been a reason for a variance, or in the backyard, a reason for variance also. It's not, it's, and vegetation is a time-based thing, because it's renewable. I see the zoning as a similar characteristic insofar as it's a time-based thing that affects the sighting of the property, as you can see it through the dimensions that are throughout the neighborhood. I mean, it's not explicit, but I don't think it's too much of a stretch.
Can, yeah, Mr. Fox?
So, maybe it's less the age of the neighborhood and more the age of the parcel? Would that potentially address? Because I understand the worry on basing it on the age of the neighborhood, because then that contradicts point B, which is, it'll be related to this location, not other locations. I think it's the broadness of neighborhood. I understand your point, Mr. Eisenbacher, as to the age of the subject property. I think just amending it to more specifically denote the single location as opposed to referencing multiple would help at least address some level of the concern Mr. Green brought up.
Yeah, the plating of the property would make sense.
So, I have a question for you, Mr. Eisenbacher, on the motion. I don't, I guess I don't understand the argument or how you're phrasing D. You're saying it's someone that the owner hired who made the mistake, but isn't that the case that most of the times, when an owner comes to us with someone, something that was done correctly, they often hired someone who did something incorrectly? And that person they hired may be the one who's at fault. That's not really our, that's not really our issue, but they're responsible for whatever they did with their property, whether they hired someone to do it, or whether they did it themselves. That owner may have a lawsuit against the person who did it for them, they may have whatever argument, but I'm really kind of troubled by this argument that a current owner of a piece of property could come in to us and say, "Well, I didn't do it, but the person I hired did it, therefore, I'm not the reason that this issue was created." Seems to me that would be a huge hole to basically write D out of our statement of hardship, because they could, and most of our applicants could say that to us for this type of a situation, that "I didn't do it, but the person I hired did it, therefore, I didn't create the situation." So, I'm really not understanding D's. I don't know, could you help me understand that?
My understanding is, is that surveyors and architects are state-certified and licensed. They have a license and a certification that states that they're able to do that type of work for laying out of property bounds, meets and bounds, and they're to design a property per safety specifications, et cetera. If those people are given an instruction from a property owner as a professional, and they fail to carry through on that instruction...
But wouldn't the, I mean, that would be a dispute between the property owner and them. That's not something really for us to deal with.
Yes, and this, this similar matter has come before this board before, where the house was complete, and they had a little triangle of the property where the surveyor had made a mistake, and you would have had to chop a corner of the house off, or a triangular shape of the house off. I mean, there's a reason why, like Mr. Kenkri said, that we've got a group of neighbors and not a robot selecting us. And this is coming from a person whose profession is engineering, and I am typically very cut and dry on these items, but our zoning ordinance is as cut and dry as it possibly can be with a board of neighbors to make variances when needed, because having one size fits all and very cut and dry does not always work in the real world. We're faced with a neighborhood and a plat that was done substantially before the city was built. He did not have the advantage of a modern house, where if you were in a much more modern neighborhood, you'd see all the faces, the houses are all lined up, and they're all set back. He can't, like he says, shows in the pictures, he can't look down the line and see that he's compliant with the rest, because as we see in the book, and, not the book, the supporting packet, there's a huge variance in the setbacks, and in the pictures, there's a variance in the setbacks. So, yes, item D does not say unless you make an honest mistake, but that's part of why we have people on the board and not just checkboxes.
Mr. McCully?
And I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher, and I understand your concern about this creating a hole in our five characteristics, but I also look at this from the standpoint that we look at each case individually and the circumstances that go with it. So, when I'm normally a no on all this, I'm a yes, because I'm looking at the circumstances and everything with this, like Mr. Eisenbacher talked about. If we look at them all individually, and we have sound reasoning for our decision, whether it's to deny or to approve, then we will never have to worry about a hole in our, in our five characteristics. So, and I think those have been supported in past cases, where they've gone to circuit court, even though we said no to some items, they took on the circuit court, because when we lay out our decisions with the rationale behind why we made them, that we've been supported every time. So, from that standpoint, I think us doing our due diligence and wording in our, in our motions, that I think that puts us in a position where we can look at these as individual, more so than a group.
Mr. Green?
I, I am not yet swayed. We're talking about the motion on the table, and I just want to speak to that, and the reasons for me cover most of what's in front of us, at least to my interpretation of the statement of practical difficulty. I appreciate where you're all coming from, and I don't like where I've landed. I am a neighbor, and if it were me, whether I were a builder, or an individual, or, you know, a multi-billionaire developer who has plots all over the country, doesn't, it doesn't matter. That's still, you know, for that property and that honest mistake and unfortunate oversight of the contractor who, I don't know what your recourse is, but I hope you have some, but, like, that would be, that would be a really bad day, and recovering from that from whatever situation that was would suck. And I wish I could get there, as some of my colleagues have, but for, for the reasons broadly that I've already stated, I can't.
Mr. Desmond?
I'm looking at this as a letter of the law, or spirit of the law thing. Now, then, the spirit of the zoning laws is to create a series of city controls to prevent overzealous builders from going beyond their bounds and trying to push a property out of the context of a neighborhood in which it's being constructed. We've seen that happen with giant garages. We've seen that happen with builders occupying every possible space of the buildable footprint of a lot, which then leaves the future homeowners out of having a deck, because there's no space to put things like a deck, even though there's a second-story door, you know, leading to a deck that can't be built. The spirit of the zoning is contained within that, like, that framework, right? Like, in this particular dynamic, we're looking at an older neighborhood that has property, frontages all over the place. It is not a new neighborhood that has that consistent symmetry that's expected in some of the neighborhoods. of the neighborhoods. The reality is, is that this is an administrative proceeding that if never happened, no one would notice because it would not be an unnotable construction within the area. So, within that spirit, I don't see this causing any kind of a major disruption to the overall zoning within Troy by allowing this because of its unique dynamics. And as far as the actual characteristics, I, I do agree that, I mean, from the builder's own statement, that he hadn't actually considered doing these modifications until he added extra space to account for it being lower than the road and he needed an extra step. And so, in a very real way, the property did lead to this end result, which was not, you know, it, it ran afoul of the letter of, of the, the zoning law. But, again, the idea that he did not occupy the entire footprint for this tells me this is not a builder who's just trying to maximize his return on square foot price. Because had he done that, it would have been pushed out in every direction, and we all know those properties, we've seen those properties, and that's not what's happening here. This was a issue of a subcontractor, it seems like, incorrectly putting some foundation marks or whatever the delivery method was, and I don't know if there was then another concrete sub that came in. But under that whole dynamic is what makes me say yes, I'm willing to grant the variance in this particular circumstance. Not necessarily leaving that hole open for every potential that shows up, but in this particular situation, I would say yes.
I guess I would just say, I mean, the spirit of, in the, the letter of the, the ZBA is variances should be granted sparingly and tailored to something very unique to the property. We, we've been educated on that several times by the city. We've been through this many times. It's, we start with the property. Is there something exceptional with the actual property? And there's nothing exceptional about the property. It's a self-admitted error by the applicant. And so, I understand, I understand the spirit in which the board is discussing this, but it, I, and regardless of who's before us, as Mr. Green said, whether it's, you know, someone, an individual, a builder, Walmart, Amazon, whoever would come in front of us, they'd all be held to the same standard, whoever it is. Because what we're focusing on is the property, not who's standing before us. And so, I think we're, we're just kind of going the exact opposite in this, in this case. But I've said enough. All right, Mr. Fox, did you have your hand up?
Oh, no, I, my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we're going to have, need any further discussion. I think we've all had our say, unless anyone else wants to contribute. So, we have a motion pending to grant from Mr. Eisenbacher, seconded by Mr. Desmond. I think we're now ready to vote.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Bossenbrooke?
No.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
All right, we've had our vote. Motion passes, part of three, so the variance has been granted. That will conclude item number five A. Move on to item number six. Are there any communications, Mr. Evans?
Only that we do have items for a September meeting, so expect to be here.
All right, very good. I don't see any miscellaneous business for us tonight to consider. And I will, we can open up some more public comment if there's any members of the public who wish to speak in any items, whoever. Don't see anything, anyone coming forward. So, we will then adjourn and see everybody in September. Thank you.